SB 1073 going by temporarily shall say aye. Those opposed, SB 1073 goes by temporarily.
Returning to page one of the calendar. Senate Bill 731 was moved to the regular calendar. A bill to amend and reenact section 56, 585.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to electric utility regulation authorized rate of return, reported from Labor and Commerce with amendments and the floor amendments, there are floor amendments.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Parliamentary inquiry.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Would be proper procedure for me to accept the committee amendments first and then do the floor amendments?
That is correct.
All right. Madam Speaker, I would move the committee amendments at this time.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments are agreed to.
Madam Speaker, will the clerk report the floor amendment?
The clerk will please report the floor amendments.
Floor amendments to Senate Bill 731 offered by Delegate Jones. Number one, line 528 engrossed after subsection strike the remainder of line 528 and through income on line 529. Amendment two, line 530 engrossed after recorded strike the remainder of line 530, all of line 531, and through meters on line 532. Amendment three, after line 614 engrossed, strike all of lines 615 through 617 and through in on line 618, insert in.
Delegate Jones.
Madam Speaker, speaking of the floor amendments.
Delegate Jones, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Senate Bill 731, the underlying bill provides that the State Corporation Commission in determining a fair rate on a return on common equity for an investor-owned electric utility for applications received by the commission on or after January 1st, 2020, shall not set such a rate lower than the average of the three most recent annual periods for which data is available. We believe that this is a good bill because it's giving the SEC more discretion. My floor amendments would provide the SEC a little bit more discretion with regard to the appropriate accounting treatment for certain generation facility costs if those facilities retire before the end of their useful lives. This is actually tied to Delegate Supermanium's House Bill 528, which passed the Senate today with a friendly amendment, which is coming back tomorrow after some stakeholder work. And so it would be my hope that we adopt this floor amendment to give the SEC a little bit more authority with what they're doing. So, thank you.
Shall the floor amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the floor amendments are agreed to. The floor amendments are agreed to. Delegate Jones.
Move the passage of the bill.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 69, nays 25, abstentions zero.
Ayes 69, nays 25, abstentions zero. The bill passes.
Returning to page four of the calendar, Senate Bill 172 was moved to the regular calendar. A bill to amend and reenact sections 38.2, 34.38, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to health insurance payment to out-of-network providers, reported from appropriations with substitute, and there is a floor substitute.
The delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Jones.
Madam Speaker, I yield to Delegate Sickles.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I would encourage everyone to read the floor substitute online, but I would also request that we go by for the day. This is a very important bill. It would end the unpleasantness of getting a surprise bill from an out-of-network doctor or hospital when you're there, particularly in emergency, but in the conditions of a non-emergency as well. And I think people want to take a little bit longer look at it, so I would just ask if we could go by for the day.
All those in favor of SB 172 going by for the day shall say aye. Those opposed, SB 172 goes by for the day.
Returning to page five of the calendar, Senate Bill 199 was moved to the regular calendar. A bill to amend and reenact sections 18.2, 340.19, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to the conduct of charitable gaming, reported from general laws and reported from appropriations.
Madam Speaker?
Yes, Delegate from Virginia Beach, Delegate Davis.
Would the delegate representing the patron rise for a question?
I don't know if we know who that is. Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Bolova. Will you yield to Delegate Davis?
Thank you.
Delegate Davis, he yields.
Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate that would I be accurate in saying that if a contractor were to start receiving money on a project and utilize some of that for something besides labor materials, that regardless of weather at the end of the day...
(inaudible)
Oh, I'm taking that... Ferris, I'm taking it out to you now. That's right.[329.22][329.22](Laughter).
Madam Speaker, I'm glad I could answer the gentleman's question.
Delegate from...[335.03][335.03](Laughter). The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 96, nays 2, abstentions 0.
Ayes 96, nays 2, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Page five of the calendar, Senate Bill 208 was moved to the regular calendar, and it has been explained.
Shall the bill pass? Delegate from Virginia Beach, now's your chance.
Right bill this time. Would the delegate representing the patron, which may be a different one, rise for a question?
Delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring. Okay, the delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born. Will you yield?
I'll yield.
Delegate yields, Delegate Davis.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate if it would be correct that if a contractor were to start receiving funds and started to expend some of that, even just a profit margin piece, on something besides labor and material, that it could be cause for a lawsuit by any subcontractor?
Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, what I would say to the gentleman is that, as I understand the bill, the bill seeks to make sure that contractors are paying their subcontractors or subcontractors are paying their subcontractors prior to any expenditure of payments that they've received from an owner.
Delegate Davis.
Madam Speaker, would the delegate yield for one more question?
I'd be happy to yield, Madam Speaker.
Delegate Davis.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, I would ask the delegate, since a lot of contractors and subcontractors tend to use invoice financing, where they put that contract up as collateral to receive funds against it, and all payments that at that point go to the person making the loan, how does that impact this legislation?
Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, I would say to the gentleman, I would suspect that anyone who's lending a contractor money on an invoice would also want to look at what expenditures and what outstanding payments they have, much like anyone seeking credit would do. You'd have, you know, income and expenses and your disposable income to make those payments. So I suspect that that's going to be a case-by-case basis for the lender.
Delegate Davis.
Madam Speaker, speaking to the bill at the appropriate time?
Delegate Davis, you have the floor.
Thank you. Madam Speaker, this is an interesting piece of legislation because it sounds really good on its surface, but here's the truth of the matter, is that a lot of these contractors and subcontractors are extremely small. And when they get these contracts, they don't hold all this money up inside one pile just to use to pay for labor and materials. Remember, there's also profit in there. And that profit is utilized to pay their employees, it's used to pay to keep the lights on and other things. And these projects, in many cases, are not short-term projects. I've been involved in many of these projects that are six, eight months at a time. I couldn't imagine having to keep all the money that you get for less than the first four months to be able to pay for just the labor materials over the course of a six- or eight-month contract. And that's what this piece of legislation does, because if you look at it, in that last paragraph, it says that before a contractor can utilize any funds on a project for anything besides labor or material, that they have to either pay or hold enough to pay all monies due or that will become due on a contractor, or on a contract. This puts a lot of small contractors in a very precarious situation. And Madam Speaker, I would also add that it is common practice, in many cases, for contractors to use receivable financing, especially small contractors. And what that does is they get money upfront as a loan, but all the payments are made to the person making the loan. And that becomes pretty precarious from there. So I appreciate what we're trying to do, but this gets into a really sticky situation with allowing these small contractors to be able to maintain their businesses.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking of the bill?
Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, I would have a slightly different bent on what the bill is seeking to accomplish. I would argue that this bill is making sure that our smaller businesses, our subcontractors, are actually getting paid for the work that they've performed on a project. Secondly, Madam Speaker, I think the second most important thing that this bill does is it prohibits general contractors from penalizing subcontractors who aren't performing as they were expected on one project with another project. So you can't withhold funds from one project and get them to another project. Many other states have this, and I would urge the body to support the bill.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, speaking of the bill?
Delegate Simon, you have the floor.
Just to add a little bit to what the Chair of Civil Sub very aptly explained, this bill just rates... All of this, there hasn't been intent to fraud. And all that, so with everything Delegate Davis was talking about, if there's actually a bona fide contract, this is a regular payment they make in the course of their business, that would be evidence they could introduce if they were, as in rebuttal, intended to fraud. Basically, it says you can't go pay other people without paying your subcontractors first and then saying, "I don't have any money left, I'd love to pay you, but I can't." So if they've got a routine that they always do, that's part of their course of business, that would be rebuttable evidence they could put in court later. So again, it's a good bill, I hope you all pass it.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 66, nays 30, abstentions 1.
Ayes 66, nays 30, abstentions 1. The bill passes.
Returning to page 17 of the calendar, Senate Bill 1032 was moved to the regular calendar.
Shall the bill... Actually, yeah, Madam Clerk, yeah.
Sorry, a bill to amend and reenact section 17.1, 606 of the Code of Virginia relating to civil actions, determinations of indigency, reported from courts of justice.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. SB 1032 sets out the factors to be considered by a court, and it's determination of a person's indignancy for the purpose of deterring inability to pay fees or costs in a civil action. The bill also provides that a person presumed unable to pay if he is a current recipient of a state or federally funded public assistance program, or if he is represented by the Legal Aid Society. The bill provides that the presumption is rebuttable, except in the case of a no-fault divorce. I move that the bill be passed.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 86, nays 6, abstentions 0.
Ayes 86, nays 9, abstentions 0. The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 13, abstentions 0.
Ayes 82, nays 13, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Returning to page 22 of the calendar, Senate Bill 133 went by temporarily. A bill to amend and reenact sections 16.1, 69.48, colon, 1 of the Code and other sections of the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 19.2, 303.6 relating to deferred disposition persons with autism or intellectual disabilities, reported from courts of justice with substitute.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I move the committee substitute.
Shall the committee substitute be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee substitute is agreed to. Delegate Herring.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. As amended by the committee substitute, SB 133 allows a court to defer dismiss a criminal case where the defendant has been diagnosed with autism or an intellectual disability, and the court finds by clear and convincing evidence that the criminal conduct was caused by or had a direct and substantial relationship to the person's disorder or disability. I move that the bill be passed.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 89, nays 7, abstentions 0.
Ayes 89, nays 7, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Returning to page 30 of the calendar, Senate Bill 455 went by temporarily. It has been explained, and the substitute has been adopted.
The delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Sickles.
Madam Speaker, this bill now is conformed to my bill that allows a provisional ballot to be counted with a postmark until noon on Friday. And Senator Reeves' bill would have allowed military voters to have more time than that, but it was the really bipartisan consensus of the committee that we need to have one day that the election ends. And so his bill now is, gives military voters and everybody else the same right to get their absentee ballot in by noon on Friday. So I would urge the body to support Senator Reeves' substitute. That's my bill.
The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 93, nays 2, abstentions 0.
Ayes 93, nays 2, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Returning to page 32 of the calendar, Senate Bill 740 went by temporarily. It has been explained, and the substitute has been adopted.
Delegate from Norfolk, Delegate Lindsey.
Madam Speaker, just a clarification to the adjustment. The tweaking is allowed by the localities and not by the General Assembly itself.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 96, nays 2, abstentions 0.
Ayes 96, nays 2, abstentions 0. The bill passes.
Returning to page 37 of the calendar, Senate Bill 1073 went by temporarily. A bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Title 36, a chapter numbered 10.2 consisting of sections numbered 36, 156.3 through 36, 156.6 relating to the Virginia Food Access Investment Program and Fund, reported from appropriations with amendment.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate McQuinn.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, I move the adoption of the amendments proposed by House Appropriation.
Shall the committee amendments be agreed to? All those in favor, say aye. All those opposed, the committee amendments have been agreed to.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, the Virginia Food Access Investment Program and Fund is identical to my bill. This is Senate Bill 1073, and I move that, this is the Virginia Food Access Investment Fund, as I've said, I hope it would be the will of the body to pass the bill, to move the bill.
Shall the bill pass? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 77, nays 19, abstentions 1.
Ayes 77, nays 19, abstentions 1. The bill passes.
House bills with Senate amendments. Page 37. House Bill 6, a bill to amend and reenact sections 36, 96.1 through 36, 96.3 of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Fair Housing Law, unlawful discriminatory housing practices. There are Senate amendments.
Delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Born.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking of the amendments?
Delegate Born.
Madam Speaker, ladies and gentlemen of the House, I'm going to ask that we accept the Senate amendments. The Senate amendments simply provide a 15-day turnaround time from the time a potential tenant engages and makes a request for tenancy to a landlord and to the administering agency for the voucher. I hope it would be the will of the body to adopt the amendments.
Shall the Senate amendment be adopted? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 57, nays 38, abstentions 0.
Ayes 57, nays 38, abstentions 0. The Senate amendment is adopted.
House Bill 36, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 23.1, 401.2 relating to public institutions of higher education, student journalists, freedom of speech, and the press. There are Senate amendments.
Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Speaking of the amendments?
Delegate Hurst, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, I would point you to page 38, which lists out the amendments from the Senate, House Bill 36, which would give definitions of student journalists and protections for student journalists and student media advisers at our higher education institutions. Those amendments are fine. Some of the other amendments, though, including restricting the provisions on censorship and opinion pieces, and then also what the higher education institutions shall and shall not be able to do to censor what might be said by other groups besides student journalists still needs to be hashed out in conference. So I would, in short, ask that the body reject the Senate amendments.
Shall the Senate amendments be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 1, nays 95, abstentions 0.
Ayes 1, nays 95, abstentions 0. The Senate amendments are rejected.
Page 39, House Bill 211, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding a section numbered 46.2, 745.3 relating to special license plate, air metal. There is a Senate substitute.
Delegate from Montgomery, Delegate Hurst.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Ladies and gentlemen of the House, this will be far simpler. The Senate substitute merely makes it so that the specialty license plate, for those who have received an air metal, will be a $10 yearly fee instead of a $10 one-time fee. So I would hope that the body would accept the Senate substitute.
Shall the Senate substitute be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 92, nays 0, abstentions 0.
Ayes 92, nays 0, abstentions 0. The Senate substitute is adopted.
House Bill 578, a bill to amend and reenact section 46.2, 810.1 of the Code of Virginia relating to smoking in motor vehicle with a minor present. There are Senate amendments.
The delegate from Arlington, Delegate Lopez.
Madam Speaker, could this bill go by for the day?
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Newport News, Delegate Mullen.
In lieu of that, I might be able to speak to this bill.
Delegate Mullen, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. HB 578 is a bill to ban smoking in automobiles with certain minors. The original bill said that it applied to all minors. The Senate said that only those under 15 should be applicable. I move that we accept the Senate amendments.
Shall the Senate amendments be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 52, nays 43, abstentions 0.
Ayes 52, nays 43, abstentions 0. The Senate amendments are adopted.
Page 40, House Bill 623, a bill to amend and reenact sections 6.2, 15.26, and many other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to gender-neutral terms, prohibitions on same-sex marriage and civil unions removed from code, certain gender-specific crimes, penalty. There is a Senate substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, HB 623 comes back to us in almost the same form that it left us. The one difference being that the House version eliminated the common law crime of adultery, the statutory crime of adultery. This bill doesn't do that. Instead, earlier this afternoon, we talked about the flagrant servile bill, which allows you to take a negative inference for taking the Fifth Amendment on adultery. So we solved the problem a different way in another earlier bill, comes out of this bill. Other than that, it's the same as it left the House, and so I would urge the body to accept the Senate substitute.
Shall the Senate substitute be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 53, nays 43, abstentions 0.
Ayes 53, nays 43, abstentions 0. The Senate substitute is adopted.
House Bill 675, a bill to amend and reenact section 46.2, 334.01 of the Code of Virginia relating to license restrictions for minors, use of handheld personal communications devices. There is a Senate amendment.
Delegate from Chesterfield, Delegate Robinson.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. My House Bill 675 passed out of the House at 99 to nothing, came out of the Senate Committee with only two no votes, and then when it got to the House floor, the Senate decided they would amend it. This is the bill that would allow provisional drivers to use their phones for navigational purposes versus, and it's just clarification in the language in the code. And what the Senate did on the floor is they stripped all that language completely out, so it makes it really a non-bill. And so I would like to reject the Senate amendments.
Shall the Senate amendment be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 0, nays 97, abstentions 0.
Ayes 0, nays 97, abstentions 0. The Senate amendments are rejected.
House Bill 717, a bill to direct the Department of Mines, Minerals, and Energy to convene a working group to determine the feasibility of an electric vehicle rebate program. There is a Senate amendment.
Delegate from Loudon, Delegate Reed.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, the Senate made one small change, and this was at my request. The date that the report is due to us about the EV rebate program was originally August the 30th, and I asked them to move this to November the 1st, and so I would ask the House to accept the Senate amendment.
Shall the Senate amendment be adopted? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 55, nays 42, abstentions 0.
Ayes 55, nays 42, abstentions 0. The Senate amendment is adopted.
Page 41, House Bill 941, a bill to require the Commissioner of Highways to place permanent electronic speed indicator signs on U.S. Route 17. There is a Senate amendment.
Delegate from Falkir, Delegate Weber.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, what the Senate did is they struck the last sentence of the bill, and I would move that the body accept the Senate amendment, even if I may say why?
Delegate Weber.
Because then it basically says that the locality will pay for the signs.
Shall the Senate amendment be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Ayes 82, nays 15, abstentions 0.
Ayes 82, nays 15, abstentions 0. The Senate amendment is adopted.
House Bill 1041, a bill to amend and reenact sections 32.1, 261, and 32.1, 269 of the Code of Virginia relating to board of health, certificate of birth, change of sex. There is a Senate substitute.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, if you didn't like this bill before, you're still not going to like it any better now, so you want to maintain your vote, check how you voted before. If you like this bill, you'll still like it, but let me tell you what the difference is. We added language to clarify that nothing we're doing here to streamline the process by which Virginia residents can get their sex changed on their birth certificate. We're also saying that we aren't depriving the circuit court of the authority to make whatever findings might be necessary for residents whose birth certificates were issued in other states to get a change on that other state. So that's all this bill does, the amendment does. I hope that it'll be the pleasure of the body to accept the Senate amendment.
Shall the Senate substitute be adopted? The clerk will close the roll.
Ayes 51, nays 45, abstentions 0.
Ayes 51, nays 45. Eyes fifty-one, nays forty-five, abstentions zero, the Senate substitute is adopted.
House Bill Ten-forty-nine, a bill to amend and reenact sections two point two, twenty-two oh three point three, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to prohibited discrimination, sexual orientation, and gender identity. There is a Senate substitute.
The delegate from Alexandria, Delegate Levine.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The Senate substitute purports to reflect existing law on contracting, but it doesn't do that. They don't get it right. So I move that we reject the Senate substitute, so we get this in the conference and get it right.
Shall the Senate substitute be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes one, nays ninety-seven, abstentions zero.
Eyes one, nays ninety-seven, abstentions zero, the Senate substitute is not, is rejected.
Page forty-two, House Bill Ten-fifty-six, a bill to amend the Code of Virginia by adding in Title Thirty, a chapter numbered sixty, consisting of sections numbered thirty, three seventy-six through thirty, three eighty-three relating to Commission on Wellness and Opportunity Report. There are Senate amendments.
The delegate from Richmond City, Delegate Adams.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. This bill passed out of the House, seventy-seven to twenty, there's no content changes. I did ask the Senate to make an adjustment so that we could equalize the membership amongst the legislative bodies, so that is the change, and now there will be three and three. I hope that it is the will of the body to accept the Senate amendments.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Caroline, Delegate O'Rourke.
Madam Speaker, all due respect to the patrons, speaking to the amendment.
Delegate O'Rourke.
It has been a longstanding practice that we do not have equal representation on such committees from the House and Senate. It has been a longstanding effort on the part of the Senate to try and do so, and I would suggest that if we accept this, these amendments, we're breaking the dam, and you can expect this precedent to continue forward. So I would suggest that we would reject the Senate amendments and get the bill in conference.
Delegate from Fairfax, Delegate Simon.
Madam Speaker, members of the House, I would hesitate to disagree with my colleague from Richmond City, but I think in this case, I would also encourage the members of the body to reject this. It's not to do any harm to the bill, I think we can get this into conference and get this issue of representation worked out. I think it's important that we at the House maintain our prerogative to have proper proportion of representation with a hundred members in our body, only forty members in their body.
Madam Speaker.
Delegate from Roanoke City, Delegate Russell.
Madam Speaker, can this bill go by temporarily?
All those in favor of HB Ten-fifty-six going by temporarily shall say aye. Those opposed, Ten-fifty-six goes by temporarily.
House Bill Ten-seventy-eight, a bill to amend and reenact section two point two, forty-three oh two point two of the Code of Virginia relating to the Virginia Public Procurement Act, process for competitive negotiation, including employment of persons with a disability as a factor that will be used in evaluating a proposal. There is a Senate amendment.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The clerk described the bill very well, what the amendment does, and I'm going to ask you to accept it. It exempts transportation, construction, or transportation-related construction in the evaluation, so I hope it'd be the pleasure of the body to support, accept, the Senate amendment.
The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes fifty-three, nays forty-three, abstentions zero.
Eyes fifty-three, nays forty-three, abstentions zero, the Senate amendment is adopted.
Page forty-three, House Bill Ten-ninety, a bill to amend and reenact sections twenty-two point one, two seventy-one point two, and thirty-two point one, forty-six of the Code of Virginia related to required immunizations. There is a Senate substitute with amendment.
Delegate from Arlington, Delegate Hope.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I'm also going to ask the body to accept the Senate substitute. What this substitute does is it will add four vaccines to the list of required vaccines for attendance at public and private schools. Those vaccines are hepatitis A, HPV for boys, meningitis, and rotavirus. The Senate substitute also creates a process for the Virginia Department of Health to keep the required vaccine list current by regulation. The Department of Health shall amend the required vaccine list as necessary to maintain conformity to evidence-based routinely recommended vaccines for children. Madam Speaker, members of the House, we need this bill because despite the significant advances in immunizations and numerous introduced bills to ensure Virginia's standards remain current, Virginia has not added an immunization to its mandated list since 2008, more than twelve years. Rather than repeat the cycle of political debate regarding mandatory immunizations, the bill empowers evidence-based decision-making by Virginia's infectious disease experts. Now, the bill does not divest anyone of their right to an exemption. The bill preserves all current exemptions in Virginia law. If you use a religious or a medical exemption today, you can still use it once this bill becomes law. Madam Speaker, for those members who voted for this bill prior to crossover, you should support this substitute because it accomplishes the same goals. For those members who voted against the bill prior to crossover, you should support the substitute because it addresses the concerns that were raised regarding a federal agency making these decisions. The Senate substitute replaces the Centers for Disease Control with the Virginia Department of Health. Virginia's own experts will be making future decisions regarding vaccines. Madam Speaker, this bill will save life. I ask that they accept the Senate substitute.
Shall the Senate substitute with amendments be adopted? The clerk shall close the roll.
Eyes fifty-four, nays forty-four, abstentions zero.
Eyes fifty-four, nays forty-four, abstentions zero, the Senate substitute with amendments are adopted.
House Bill Ten-ninety-two, a bill to amend and reenact sections forty-six point two, two oh three point one, and other sections of the Code of Virginia relating to Department of Motor Vehicles, release of information. There is an emergency clause, and there are Senate amendments.
The delegate from Prince William, Delegate Ayala.
Thank you, Madam Speaker, speaking to the Senate amendments.
The House will be at ease.